To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Excuse me. Will the city recorder please call roll?
Mayor Jacobola?
Present.
Council President Steinhebel?
Here.
Counselor Conti?
Here.
Counselor Mann?
Here.
Counselor Salvage?
Here.
Counselor McLean? And Counselor Workman?
Here.
Thank you. Move on to consent calendar. Following items are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be any separate discussions on these items unless a counselor so requests. In that case, item will be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. Number one, agenda Lebanon City Council Agenda October 8, 2025. Council meeting 2025-09-24. City Council regular meeting and work session. Is there a motion?
Move for...
Go ahead. Move to approve?
Second.
Motion's been made to approve the consent calendar. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We'll move on to presentations and tonight we have Julie Jackson from Republic Services. Please, please come forward.
Thank you for having us here tonight. I say yes because I've got Amy Morgan. If we have operations questions you need answers for, she's going to be the person to help with that. So I am here to talk about the annual rate adjustment. We do that using what we call the refuse rate index. And in your packet is the calculation to do that. So if you, if you look at this sheet, you'll see that 65% of this is based just on CPI. And we take, we look at the year-over-year change in CPI from June 30, 2024 to June 30, 2025. And then the percentage of change is 2.2% this year, which 60, at a weight of 65%, is a 1.4% increase. The, the next component we use is fuel costs. And this year, which we're really pleased to see, fuel costs were pretty much steady and flat. And so there's 0% increase for fuel this year. And then disposal at Coffin Butte landfill, we had a 3.9% increase weighted by 25%. That adds 1%. So 2.4% is the calculation for January 1, 2026. On the first sheet, you can see that that amounts to 64 cents on a 20 gallon cart, up to $1.04 per month on a 90 gallon cart. And then I show also 54 cents on the 32 gallon cart with low income discount. So one of the things we've been doing for the last couple of years is working with the city of Lebanon to, to provide a discounted cart rate for low income folks. We, we use the same list that you use, and that works really well for us. So we're, we're not really in the business or able to vet those people, but because you do it, we're able to do that as well and use the list. And we've just had that partnership with the city. I can answer questions if you have any about the rate adjustment, or I can answer questions about other things. I did want to talk to you about the recycling events in the city too as well, but I can stop there if you have any questions.
I don't see any.
Okay.
So please continue.
Okay. Well, so I think you're, most of you are aware that we've been doing four small recycling events in the city. One is the spring recycle roundup that we've been doing for years. And we're not suggesting any change there. We also do a hazardous waste event once a year here in East Lynn County. But we added two more where we came over, we sent a truck over. It takes a couple of drivers. We bring over, we take electronics and cardboard and recycling at those events as well. So we have had about five people attending those events over the course of the year. And we don't feel like it's a really great use of resources to do that when not so many people are taking care or taking advantage of those. So what we're proposing is that we, we do the hazardous waste event and we do the recycle roundup, but we add more to those events for folks. So you may be aware that there's a mattress EPR program, Extended Producer Responsibility Program. If you buy a new mattress, you're probably aware of that because you're going to pay, I don't know what the charge is, something like $22, I think, when you buy a mattress. And that helps pay for the cost of disposal of those mattresses. Mattresses can be really problematic. So there is a mattress through DEQ, there is a mattress organization that can come and set up at the events and they can take mattresses. And so people would be able to bring those mattresses at no charge on the, at the other two events. We can take other things too. If, if you want us to have space for large cardboard, if you want us to take plastic film, there, there are a variety of things that we can take, and we'd certainly be open to suggestions from the city on that as to things you'd like us to take at those events. But, but we are proposing that we just do the two and not four, just because they just haven't been utilized. And we, I think we've done them about two and a half years now. And it feels like we gave it a shot. So I'd love to have your...
Can you give me any insight? I probably shouldn't. How do you, how do you advertise these? Have to find out you're having them.
We have an annual calendar that we send out to customers. It's on our website. We've asked the chamber to put it up on their reader board. You know, we just kind of get it out the same way we get all the other events out. And people seem to know when the spring recycle event is, they know when the hazardous waste event is. So it tells me that they're seeing those dates.
Thank you.
Sure.
I have one question. I know you've done some in-kind donations, like on Porter Street and Mill Street with dumpsters and that kind of stuff. And I did, in your letter, you say there's 60,000 in cash and in-kind. Maybe you can explain some of the stuff you've done specifically about...
In Lynn County.
Well, in Lebanon specifically.
Yeah. So the, the one that really came out of some questions for a counselor who's no longer on the council, but we, we heard at a council meeting, I don't know, maybe three, four years ago, that the Lebanon Soup Kitchen was having problems with their trash and, and people were going through it and it was, they didn't have the funds to have it emptied often enough. And so we heard that and we came over, chatted with them. And ever since then, we have set up a donation for their, all of their waste services. They were not, they couldn't afford to have it emptied more than once a week and it was getting smelly and they were having problems. So now they have weekly service and they don't pay for any of it. So that was one that we felt like was a really good solution. We donate to the Boys and Girls Club. We donate to the Strawberry Festival. We donate to a number of, of Lynn County events as well. And then I, I really didn't include in that 60,000, but we do work with the county when there's a cleanup that needs to be done. We, we generally donate some of the services for some of the boxes on those properties that just need a cleanup. Yeah. I mean, we have a charitable foundation and there's an online process. And that's one of the things we try to get out there is how people get to that website and how they can apply for a grant from us.
And, and I was giving you an opportunity to kind of teat your own horn because we do appreciate, even though these properties weren't in the city, they were in the county, but they're in, you know, kind of in the city, right?
Yeah, close enough.
On Mill Street and Porter Street. And I know we work closely with Republic Services on, on getting at least, you know, it wasn't all donated. I get that. But there was certainly some, we, we got significant help from Republic Services.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's really the beauty of a franchise because it, it tells us that we're partners with the city. And we feel like in order to be a good partner, we need to make some of those donations and we need to provide some of the expertise that we have in getting those boxes into what are, I think the last one was really muddy and there were some issues with getting the containers in and out of there. But we have, luckily, we have folks who know how to do that. Oh, and the one other thing that I wanted to touch on was I put this sheet in your packet. This is the new recycling guide that is a part of Oregon's Recycling Modernization Act. It was enacted, I've been working on this for four years, easy, with the state, but it just finally came to fruition on July 1, 2025. And really, all you need to know right now, there will be other steps and other things that happen, but right now, there are just more materials that you can put in your recycling. And so the hope is that as you can put more bigger things in your recycling, you can downsize your trash cart. If you look at plastics, you can now put tub buckets up to five gallons in size. Lots of us reuse those, but when they get broken and when you can't reuse them anymore, they can go right in the recycling. Something we've talked about for years are lids on plastic jugs and jars and things. And it's been really confusing to people why they need to take those off. And now you can leave those on because technology has changed. And at the plants where they sort those materials, they have something that will just slice that neck right off. And so those can go in. Probably the most significant in terms of recovery is that you can put up to 10 pounds of scrap metal, pots and pans or other scrap metal things in the cart. And I, I know recently for me, I cleaned out a closet literally, and I had some of those metal closet brackets that hold the pole. And typically I would have saved a box, I would have taken them to Bercham's Metal or they would have sat in our carriage house for a long time and nothing would have happened. But I was able just to throw them in my recycling cart and get rid of them. And for me, that was a really good savings. Or I don't know if you have a teenager or a husband who's burned a pan up, but that can go right in the recycling now. So we're pretty excited about that. And then the other one that, that people will notice is milk cartons. The traditional gable top milk cartons can now go in. The only thing I would tell you about those is I open that all the way and just give it a quick rinse because if you don't, it's going to be really smelly in your cart, especially in the summertime. So if you have any questions about recycling, let me know. But probably in the first quarter of 2020, Lynn County is on the schedule with RMA to have some expanded depots. So that means about the first quarter of 20, or of 2027, I'm sorry. There'll be new things that can be taken at the depot like styrofoam and plastic film and some funny things like, if you know those little six-pack holders that are little round tops that hold cans and jars, those things and, and all kinds of really interesting things at that point. So it will just keep building on itself and more materials will be added all the time as there are markets for them. Any other questions for me?
Did you need more feedback on cutting back from 42? Because I think it makes sense as far as the recycling events. If you're only getting a handful of people...
Yeah.
I don't know why you'd send a, a truck to...
They're not required in the contract, but we really want your approval to cut back on those before we make any changes. Or even if you think about this and, and you have some suggestions about some other things we could do to help out the city. Because I know there's not a depot and we want, and cardboard was one of those issues that people just don't have enough room for, you know, big cardboard if they get an appliance or a television or something. You know, if there's a location where somebody might be watching it, we could certainly try another cardboard container that could just be for the community. If, if you have some ideas about where that might be, we'd love to hear that. Maybe at the police department. Who would, who would put trash in it there? So anyway, we're really open to those things and we're open to suggestions that you have. We want to provide the service, but we, you know, we're paying two or three employees to be there for five people and that doesn't seem very time or labor efficient.
Alrighty. Is there any other questions or comments?
I have a kind of off the track comment here. Do you have any feedback or any feelings about the Coffin Butte expansion you'd like to share with us?
Do you have any questions you'd like to ask me?
You just had a presentation last meeting.
Yes, I'm aware of that, yeah.
And I'm just curious how you feel about it.
Well, we've been working on this expansion for a good four years, three in earnest. And so personally, I think it's a great opportunity to buy some time. You'll hear some of the opponents say that we have 15 years left at the landfill. We really have more like 10 years left. And that might seem like a long time, but in landfill life, that is nothing. It, it will take two years to get DEQ to finish a permit for a new cell, for example. So we feel like we're really behind the gun. We, there's no plan as to where things might go. And we think extending the life of the landfill for another six years, so it would be about a total of 16 years, really provides an opportunity to develop a regional plan, not just for Benton County, but for Lynn County, Marion County, and the other counties that use that regional landfill. So, so yeah, so I, I certainly support that idea.
I, I kind of figured you, I just wanted to know how you felt about it.
You know, as you might guess.
Thank you.
Sure. You know, I think there was a question asked, I was told there was a question asked when the, the folks from Benton Clean and Strong were here about would an expansion cost more money for the rate payers? And the answer is, I think, I mean, I can't give you an exact yes or no, but we don't think it would cost more. And here's why. We're constantly building cells at Coffin Butte. We are moving cells and roads all the time because landfills are sort of built, they're sort of an engineering wonder and they're sort of, one cell builds on top of the other and braces one. So we're constantly building cells and that's just what we would be doing with the expansion too, just building a cell in a different location. So that is already worked into our budget.
Alrighty, thank you. Do you, any other questions or comments?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sure.
We'll move on to public comments. There, I don't think we have any public comments cards. There'll be another opportunity for public comment at the end of the regular session if you choose to change your mind. There's cards right over there, but you won't need them on the second, the second time. So we'll move on. Moving to regular session resolution, first thing up is Resolution 2025-18, Resolution repealing, Resolution 2024-19. So, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our municipal code requires and along with our franchise fee with Republic Services that the city council go through a resolution process anytime Republic Services raises rates. What you have before you here tonight is that resolution for the 2.4% rate increase. I think truly covered most everything else, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions about that.
Alrighty. So does that, does that conclude your...
That concludes the report. This is basically, this is basically per, per municipal code and here's where we're at.
Okay. Will the city attorney please read the title of the resolution?
Resolution number 2025-18, a resolution repealing Resolution number 2024-18 and approving Republic Services rate increases.
Is there a motion on this?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made to approve. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Make sure my notes are correct here. Okay, we'll move on to Resolution number 2025-17, Resolution adopting 2025 Lynn County. City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Another resolution before you tonight. This is for the Lynn County Multi Jurisdictional Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan. That's quite a mouthful. What that is, is something we have to do for FEMA, to be prepared for FEMA if we want reimbursement from FEMA. Some cities do it on their own. We were lucky enough to get on board with a lot of cities in Lynn County. The Divisional State Land, or not Divisional State Lands, the DLCD had a grant and they managed the whole operation. What we did, we participated in multiple meetings and we looked at different hazards that not only Lynn County, but mostly what Lebanon, we focused mostly on Lebanon, but we did do, look at the whole county. You can see on the first page there, some of the, the key things that we had are, are number one, that we would see on a most recurring basis would have been flooding. We had wildfire and smoke and air quality, extreme heat, winter storms. You know, we've had the ice storms, earthquakes, but those aren't on a reoccurring, but there are, they would be massive in scale. And so what this plan does is it kind of gives you some mitigation strategies. It's something that we need to have a resolution passed for so that if, when and if we do have an issue that requires FEMA funding or insurance requirements, we meet those. What else about this? So one of the, some of the mitigation strategies that we included in this were improving stormwater infrastructure. Another big one was enhancing public communication and how systems during severe weather, wildfire, smoke events, there's a lot of different tools out there to do this. Some of them don't require the city, like on wildfire, there is watch duty that, you know, they're really quick. If you have that app, you can get on there and it gives you a notification if there's even a wildfire within the area. It gives you updates on whether there's evacuations. You can also get this from Lynn County, but that's probably one of the best apps that I've seen so far in terms of wildfire issues. Looking at, you know, seismic retrofit of different buildings that we have, that was another one that we looked at. And then just incorporating some of this stuff into our planning review and our development review and also our capital projects as we go forward. So long document. It was not printed and put in your packet and link was put because I think it was 750 pages.
No, it was, it was there.
Oh, it was all in there?
It was like 600 and some papers.
Okay, so I...
Only made it to 625.
Oh, well then you got it. The, the key would be to read the Lebanon part, but again, this is, this is something that gets us through the next five years, then we'll have to update it again. And I'm more than happy to answer any questions about it, but we recommend approving the
No questions?
I kind of have one. I know that this is a federally funded, what's it, 75% they pay for, we pay for 25%? What is our, what's economic impact of you having to do all this? Just, I'm just curious. I mean, that's a, that's a big document with a lot of stuff in it. And I mostly, to tell you the truth, just read the 219 to whatever that was ours, but...
So when you say 75, 25, you mean, if, I guess...
I just Googled it.
Okay.
And I, I'm just mostly concerned if, I mean, this took a lot of somebody's time, took a lot of your time, your time's valuable to us.
Yeah.
I kind of want to know how much time that was and what it cost us.
So reality, it probably took us, we did some, did a lot of meetings. So one hour meetings, probably about 10 of them. And, and they wrote the entire report, so we didn't have to write any of that. So very little of our time, I guess, if you think 10 hours. Myself, Kelly and Jason Rush sat in on the meetings. No, I, there was some time.
Anything you feel that we proved on other than the point you mentioned?
No, no, I don't think so.
I got you.
It's, it's more of a, if you look at it, there's mitigation strategies in it that you can use. There's nothing that says that we have to go out and do this. We're looking at things that we can mitigate that are easy to do. This is basically set up to where if there is a natural disaster and we need FEMA help, we have gone through this process.
I got you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Ron.
You bet.
Any other questions or comments? Alrighty. Will the city attorney please read the title of the resolution?
Resolution number 2025-17, Resolution adopting the 2025 Lynn County Multi Jurisdictional Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan.
Thank you. That's why he reads them and not me. Is there a motion on this resolution?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made to approve the resolution. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Move on to Cheetah Lake Park Improvement Projects, Approval of Award of GMP Amendment Number One. City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Now on to some actually fun, exciting stuff where we're going to get actually something done. What you have before you tonight is Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment Number One. The reason it says Amendment Number One, we're still scoping the entire project. The original value engineering we did with Knife River came back at about seven, I think 7.4 million. We don't have that much money. So we've got about 5.2 million in total to spend on this project. So in order to get them started, we started looking at, at the priorities. What this amendment here does is starts the YRic Drive portion of the project. What that includes is a multi-use path along our park frontage, some road widening, all the storm drainage that goes out into the park, basically stubbed out, all the other utilities stubbed out, some power work and then final paving of YRic Drive. Then we're continuing to work on what we'll call Guaranteed Maximum Price GMP Amendment Number Two. That will include all of the items in the park, restroom, the paths. I believe we'll be able to get the seating area set for the stage, which has some different concrete pathways, lighting, parking lot paving. When, we'll see how far we get with the stage. I think the stage is the one that, everything that's coming back is roughly 2.5 million. What we think we can do is probably get the backbone power and water in and the access road back to the stage and maybe a gravel parking area for now. And it'll still be usable and we'll have to come up with additional funds in the future if we want to build an actual stage back there. But that's kind of where we're at to date. What we have before you here tonight is I recommend to approve the $1.212 million GMP Amendment Number One. And we're going to plan to get started around the first part of November. And then you'll see another one come back to you, I'm guessing here in the next month or two for GMP Amendment Number Two. So with that, I can answer any questions.
Questions or comments? Okay. Is there a motion on this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made to approve. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. I've done this in the past. I've see, I see some new faces in here. And if you, if you think we're running through these really quick, there's a big packet that we all read and we've talked about this for, for months now. So it's, it's, these are usually the, just the final decision of a, a item that we've been considering for quite a long time. So, so we are doing our due diligence. So, okay, we'll move on to Ordinance 2025-09, Ordinance 3040. Finance director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you is a ordinance change to modify our purchasing limits. Currently in Lebanon Municipal Code, Chapter 3.04, we have outlined in specific figures what our purchasing requirements are. So right now, a small procurement, so anything that we can just kind of go out and buy, it represents anything less than $10,000. An intermediate procurement, something that requires generally three quotes in order, three informal quotes in order to purchase. And then you have a selection based on a multitude of criteria, right? Best item or service, price is a consideration point, but not the only point. That limitation currently is $10,000, anything that is $10,000 and up to $150,000. And then a large procurement requiring public bids, sealed bids, and you are picking solely a bid essentially based on price is for anything over $150,000. These, typically in the past, what Lebanon has done is model its purchasing policy after the state of Oregon. And you'll see in Lebanon Municipal Code's history that the last time this was updated in 2021 is, in 2021, the state updated its rules and so the, the city of Lebanon followed suit. What we'd like to do here is eliminate the specific amounts listed in the Lebanon Municipal Code and attach them to ORS. So that in the future, as the Oregon revised statutes is updated, then our purchasing policy updates automatically. Currently, what the state moved to in 2025 is small procurements. So again, anything, those direct purchases, you don't need to go out and do a whole lot of digging or due diligence work, is anything up to $25,000. Anything between $25,000 and $250,000 would now be an intermediate procurement, needing three informal quotes from vendors or service providers. And then anything over 250,000 would be a large procurement. Specifically, we are referencing ORS 279B for these changes. And you'll see in the ordinance, the recommended language that includes 279b.065, .070, and then the large procurements for any... procurements for anything above that $250,000 mark. So, we're hoping, we're asking for your consideration on, on changing those limitations and, and attaching us to state law.
Any questions or comments from council?
Brandon, how do you see changing these, bumping them up like the state did, you see, how do you see that impacting like daily business? Is it, will it be noticeable, or is this just kind of a rare, rare instance where this would actually affect the daily business?
Yeah, a lot of things right now fall under intermediate procurement, so that kind of above 10,000 threshold, right? Nothing's going to change from the standpoint of our ordering supplies or minor equipment, stuff that has been less than 10,000 in the past, but prices globally have certainly increased, and these figures were set many, many years ago, and so this kind of just, I would say, brings up purchasing allowances to be within kind of where, where costs have gone today. I would add that, that at that $25,000 limitation, so right now, the city has a policy, I think it's in the code, that says that anything over 25,000 has to have the city manager's approval in order to move forward. So, we still maintain some sense of, of oversight, we still have the city manager's approval for kind of those intermediate procurement items, and I think we'll just kind of free up the city and the staff time related to things like, you know, fencing for a project. Occasionally, that can generally exceed that $10,000 mark, and we're chasing down, you know, three vendors. It takes time because you're not necessarily getting phone calls back, or you're trying to find out who in the area does provide that, or you're trying to figure out, well, I have this one item that really should just go sole source, but with the, the limitations we have in place, you know, you can't just necessarily pull that trigger without a, a bunch of hurdles. This doesn't, I don't think, take away any oversight, doesn't, you know, give us a free for all by any means, just kind of right sizes where the world is today.
Well, and it's still, it still has to be budgeted, so, and, and anything big is still going to be, come before the city council, right? I think a prime example of where this is going to be a, a good thing for us is we'll budget, like with our wastewater plant, we'll budget maybe $500,000 in capital improvements. We don't necessarily know what those capital improvements are, it's just, is a pump going to go out, is a VFD going to go out? I can think of a couple of instances where we've had to buy two major pumps for the Westside Interceptor Pump Station. Those were $175,000. So, this is going to give us that opportunity to, all right, we can go out and three-quote that, and rather than solicit formal bids and shorten that timeframe up, it still doesn't change the fact that we're going to be, everything has to be budgeted, right? It just gives a little more flexibility in, in how we go do it. And there might be a procurement that's, you know, maybe it's only $100,000, and we look at it, we'll go, well, we've never really done or bought this kind of material, so maybe we go through a formal process. That doesn't eliminate that we can still do that, but on things that we know, I think it does save some time.
All right, thanks.
$25,000 is a lot to me, I know it's small in your budget. It doesn't, it, I don't like the sound of shadowing the state necessarily, the way they spend and way they purchase, but it says requirements are minimal. Can you describe what the, if I want to go buy a $24,000 something right now, what do I have to do to do it? What's, if I have the authority, I'd just do it? What, it says requirements minimal, what are those requirements?
It's a, it's a direct purchase, right? So, it's, are we, do we recommend that our staff looks for kind of the best, the best available option? Yes. Do we recommend that our staff looks, you know, within the city to provide kind of that return on investment, right? These are taxpayer funds, so we certainly always hope that we can keep things within the organization, within the city, and, and kind of return that, but there is, the minimalness is just, is it a reasonable purchase, and does it meet, you know, our, our purchasing guidelines, which is really just, does it have the director's signature up to a certain threshold, and, and have we done some due diligence on, is this really what we need to be buying? But it's a direct purchase, so if you found something for $24,000 that was needed for the operation of the city, and you had your manager's approval, then you could go buy it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Personally, I think it would increase your efficiency, and, and in the event of an emergency breakdown or something, what would that do? Would that allow you to, you know, remedy an emergency situation of some kind?
Yeah, I think Ron's example was, was kind of the best one, right? If you have a pump station failure that right now costs $175,000, you're going through a, a formal process. There are some emergency clauses in which you can, you know, with, with the city manager's designation, kind of skirt some of this, but this would allow for us to instead go get three informal quotes, right? Reach out to three vendors via phone and say, hey, we need this part, or we need this pump replaced, how much would it be and how fast can you get it to us? And then we get to make the best operational decision for the organization to ensure that, at least in the case of the pump station, right, that our water or our sewage keeps flowing. So, it, it really would help as far as an efficiency standpoint, especially given where pricing has gone with a lot of our products these days. I don't, I don't think it really opens us up to any sort of, you know, just willy-nilly spending, right? Everybody in this organization is really focused on what is the best opportunity for the organization, what is the best for this community, and what makes sure that we can still provide the services that we need to provide.
Thank you.
And I can tell you that our director team, I mean, even within their spending limits, most of the time, we're, we're talking about expenses that are, you know, in that range anyway, all the time, so even though they may have the authority to sign off on that, we're, we're discussing that internally as well, so.
Any other questions or comments? Alrighty, will the city attorney please read the title of the ordinance?
Ordinance Bill Number 2025-09, Ordinance Number 3040, a bill for an ordinance amending Lebanon Municipal Code, Chapter 3.04, Public Contracts.
Is there a motion on this?
I'll move to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the ordinance. It's been second in all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. We'll move on to Resolution 2025-19. Again, the finance director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are entering the last of our kind of cleanup for the 2025 fiscal year. As a reminder, that year ended June 30th, 2025. We're prepping trial balance, or basically our figures by account, to send off to our auditors. In doing so, we have a couple of things that, you know, last-minute transactions, accruals that do impact expenditures, and so before you is a end-of-season adjustment for the 2025 fiscal year. It includes some adjustments in salary lines for municipal court and the library for contract changes that occurred throughout the year, and we just couldn't slide it in underneath our original expenditure limits in each of those departments. On the library side, it also includes a small adjustment for healthcare changes that occurred with the last contract. You know, when you're, when you're setting that budget and, and contracts haven't been settled, you're kind of taking the best stab in the dark that you can, trying to budget as much as necessary, and then you have the contingency for the purpose of covering some of those unanticipated expenditures, and so that's really what we're dealing with here. On the police department side, again, similar, CBA, collective bargaining agreement settlement in, late in the process after budget adoption, so the adjustment here is looking for money to cover the additional salary and retirement costs that we incurred throughout the year as a result of that contract. In the general fund, all of that is coming from the contingency line, so it's not coming out of necessarily that savings that we have, that 17%, but it is coming out of that reserve that we always establish each year to handle unanticipated things. On the water side and the wastewater side, just personnel split, right? So, the amounts are the same because it's one individual, but again, some healthcare changes based on, this is state law that changed, and which kind of opened up some insurance options for, for some folks, so we just need $1,800, adding the contingency from both of those to cover the overages there and to ensure that we're not breaking any rules in ORS 294. That's all.
Alrighty, thank you. Any questions, comments?
I have one. On the, the $250,000 to cover salary changes for police, I know when you guys, when we, when we went through the contract, that we kind of had an estimate of what that new contract would cost, but that, that seems like a big change from, like, how are, how are we so far off in that estimation, I guess?
When we built the budget, we built based on our best estimate at the time. Bargaining was still early in, in, in the infancy stages, so we budgeted 4%. By the time contract ratification came to you all, budget adoption had already occurred, so we couldn't go back and make the necessary adjustments since you had already adopted. We did set aside contingency anticipating that if there were additional expenditures that popped up as a result of those contract settlements, we would have it. This is, this is that coming to fruition. We always try to see if, to the best of our ability, we can, you know, when there, when there are contract changes or, or changing conditions throughout a year, we try to see if we can fit that within existing expenditure limits. This is one of those examples in which we could not make that occur. We didn't have enough reduction in materials and service or capital in order to just kind of absorb that over expenditure from a personnel side, so we're, we're having to do the adjustment.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Alrighty, will the city attorney please read the title of the resolution?
Resolution Number 2025-19, a resolution authorizing a transfer of appropriations for the city of Lebanon, 2024-2025 Budget.
Alrighty, thank you. Is there any, is there a motion on the resolution?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made to approve the resolution. It's been second in all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Okay, at this time, we'll be adjourning the city, Lebanon City Council, and reconvening as the Urban Renewal Agency Committee. So, first thing on the agenda here is Resolution 2025-20. Again, the finance director.
The last of our budget cleanups, this time on the Lebanon Urban Renewal Agency side, specifically the North Gateway Urban Renewal District. If you'll remember, when we set these budgets, they're set in as what we call non-departmental expenditures, and in doing so, ORS 294 requires that we budget at very specific levels, so personnel, materials and services, capital outlay. It's very different from something like the general fund where we can budget kind of more programmatically, so police overall versus library and such, we have to vary, we have to budget at these very specific levels. So, with that being said, some adjustments are necessary just to kind of clean things up for the year. The first one, I'll admit to you, we, when we set up our new budget system, we needed $77,494 for personnel expenditures, that our new budget system did not have account codes created for that yet, so we stuck it as a filler into the contract services line to ensure that at least it was budgeted and went through the process. We didn't come back and ask you before adoption to move that up to personnel. So, we're just asking to move that original allocation from contract services up to salaries. And then we had a few expenditures related to URD amendments that needed to be reviewed, and some small expenditures in that fund that didn't hit the improvements line, that rather landed in materials and service, so we need a little bit out of the capital outlay line, which we did not use this year, to move them up into materials and service. So, again, a cleanup entry, still well within the, the overall spending for the fund, does not touch a contingency even, just operational necessity.
Alrighty, questions or comments?
No, just thank you for your quick explanation of it, I appreciate it. On both of them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Will the city attorney please read the title of the resolution?
Resolution Number 2025-20, a resolution authorizing a transfer of appropriations for the Lebanon Urban Renewal Agency, 2024-25 Budget.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made to approve. It's been second in all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, we'll adjourn the Urban Renewal Agency Committee and reconvene as the city of Lebanon City Council. Department reports, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been a while since we've had a director give a presentation on their department. Tonight, our city recorder, Julie, has got a presentation, a quick presentation on what her department does. I think it's only an hour and a half, Julie, is what you've got planned for him, so I'll let her take it away.
Three minutes. So, thank you, mayor and councillors. This report will provide a brief overview of the city recorder department, highlight how the city recorder's office supports city operations, and outline our legislative role. It will also include a summary of public records management, our commitment to transparency, share our community outreach efforts, and conclude with upcoming department goals. The city recorder's office has one full-time city recorder and a half-time deputy recorder. The city recorder's office supports all departments and many aspects of city operations. Some of our duties include intaking the processing OLCC permits, updating website content, press releases, and calendar of our events for various departments. We send out meeting notices, help prepare minutes for the planning commission, and serve as a custodian for our citywide records. The city recorder's office also works with all departments drafting ordinances and resolutions, recording council actions, and codification of the Lebanon Municipal Code to make sure it reflects with current law for the city of Lebanon. The city is always striving to have an informed community through transparency, and the city recorder's office works with all departments and legal counsel in response to public records requests. This year so far, we've received, this should be updated, 46 requests so far this year. And this year also, I know this is hard to read, it's a lot of information, but the city recorder's office has taken a more active role in our social media presence. We are now tracking the data and then reporting back to the council in our monthly council reports, but this is just kind of what that looks like. And for archives, most of the city's archives are stored online with the Oregon Records Management System, and those records are searchable on our website. The city also stores some paper copies, and per ORS, any documents dated prior to 1920 must be permanently retained as historical records. Our oldest records are from 1878. And looking ahead, our department's working to digitalize the records that are received and continue purging records that meet retention. We hope to provide internal training in 2026 on record retention and best practices. In addition, the deputy recorder is working on improving the website experience for customers by adding improved forms with quick-pay links for OLCC permits, public records requests, and more. And that is all I have for you today. I will take any questions.
Thanks, Julie.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't really have a question. You know, the, all the departments, they're, you know, they're, they're all very important. I look at this department as being right up there in the top three, right? I'm not going to name any of the other ones.
So, which one of you guys are below?
My point is, is it's very important for transparency, it's very important for historical data, it's, and it's law, and so, thank you for all your hard work on this, because it seems like it's that white noise type of job, ee, 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 kind of thing with, with these type of records, so I, I would like to thank you, so.
I will say, you said white noise, and the one thing I like about being a city recorder is everything's behind the scenes, I'm behind piles of papers or lots of, you know, records, and I rarely have to come and be before you on a microphone, so.
Well, you did well. Good job. Did you have anything?
Yeah, I got a couple more things. So, an email was sent to you all yesterday for, to select a date with Sarah Wilson from SSW, to have an interview with her, you know, preparation for our goal setting. I believe it was the 20th and 21st where she had times available. I believe it was the 20th and 21st, where she had times available. You can get on the link that was in the email and schedule a time with her. Very important that we get your input on that, and that is November 12th here in this room at, starting at noon. And we'll, it's a half day, and then we'll walk right into the council meeting, so it's going to be a really long day. But that's on the 12th. Recruitment for Community Development Director is open. We've got interview committees. Currently, I have Counselor McLean and the mayor on, as part of our interview committees. We're going to do two panels. I thought I'd ask if there was anybody else that would like to be a part of that. We can put you on one of the panels if so. We'll use some planning commissioners, and I believe we're going to try for the 28th or the 30th of this month for interviews. It'd be four to five, so. Anybody else?
Four to five o'clock?
Four, four to five interviews. I don't have times yet. We can put that out there, though, if you're interested.
I might be interested, I'm just timed.
Okay.
Work time, I'm kind of constrained right now.
I'll, I'll keep you in the loop.
You take a couple months off, two or three months off, and they expect you to be at work.
Expect you to be back at work. Okay. Well, I will, I will keep you in the loop and let you know, but we've got room on one of the, one of the two panels to, to do that, so.
Okay, I'd be interested if I can, if I can swing in.
Okay. Last thing, we're working on a new phone system, the Zoom phone. Brent and his team are making great progress at implementation. In fact, I got my new phone today. Nico Bressler came over and installed it and walked me through it, and I've forgotten most of what he told me because it was, he's got a lot of information, they've done a great job. I think the rollout's been great. Brent, am I missing anything there? Nope. Okay. Sure that. I can answer any questions you've got about any other parts of the report. And that's it.
The Corps of Engineers is planning on, or maybe they've already started the drawdown again this year? Is that correct? Or are they, is it on hold?
My understanding, it's going to start December 1st. That's what I was told by the regional director. So it was going to be a two-week drawdown and start around December 1st. So I believe that's the reason they held Green Peter Reservoir so low this year, is because they've already got it down a substantial amount. But that is one thing that we've been, Jason and his guys have been in talks with them, but, and, and as you're also aware, the, the suit was dropped in federal court. We did drop that. But it sounds like it's only going to be two weeks this year. Jason's been heavily involved with Oregon Health Authority, who's the ones that basically make the call on whether the drawdown stops or, or continues. He thinks that they've got it dialed into an NTU limit that will probably not impact us this year. We're keeping our fingers crossed. But we've made it through the last two, not without problem struggle or damage to the plant. We'll see what this year brings, but if it's only two weeks, and hopefully it's a lot less, well, that, that's the hope.
Okay.
Please, so Red Sweet Home declared a state of emergency again. Any reason for us to do that?
You know, Jason and I have talked about that, and I don't, we could. Our thought on this was, we've kind of got Oregon Health Authority now, they've had a change in who their director is, or maybe not their director, but the person that's in charge of this, and he feels like he's got a good enough rapport with them that we're probably not going to need to do that. Quite honestly, the state of emergency, what that did was give us the ability to, you know, if we had a major, something major break at the plant, we could just arbitrarily fix it. I guess, from my perspective, if something major breaks at the plant, we're going to figure out how to fix it, and if we have to come back and, and, you know, another meeting and beg for forgiveness or do it some, something, but we're not going to let people go without water, so, you know, or if we had to call an emergency council meeting to, to, to handle that, we would definitely do that. So I don't know that there's any value in it. Let, let Jason and I talk, I think we've still got some time.
I'm just curious.
No, and we, we've, it's actually something we've kicked around quite a bit, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions to city manager? All righty, we'll move on to items from council. Any items from council that want to be brought up or discussed?
I'd like to commend our city and, or find Michelle on the effort they've done to get the Friday Night Lights thing out there. It's been pretty inspirational, to get, what was it, 380-something thousand votes? The last time I looked, out of a little town this small, we've got a lot of people pulling for us, so I appreciate your effort on it.
On that note, when, when Ron and I went up to the League of Oregon Cities Conference, and we were at, I believe it was breakfast, or was it lunch? It was at a meal, and a counselor from, I believe it was a counselor from Dallas. Remember, he sat, he sat next to me, maybe you didn't hear this, but he, yeah, he mentioned that, that they put it out in Dallas to vote for us, so. It was getting around. So, any other items? All righty, any press comments? Any public comments? All righty. Next scheduled council meeting will be November 12, 2025, goal-setting work session at noon, followed by the regular city council meeting at 6:00. With that, we will adjourn this meeting. We will do an executive session here shortly.